It's like it's on the volume. I don't know.
Done. I just can't hear it in here.
Yeah, I could hear it in the audio.
Oh, I'm trying to sound the volume. It was well, when I was shutting everything off, I just turned everything off.
There he is.
No, that's all right, delaying progress in the city. Now, we're just checking the, the sound. We're good.
I see, I knew there'd be sound issues.
All right, hopefully you guys are able to hear us out there. Very good. I will call this meeting to order of the City of Finley City Planning Commission. It is November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, and I know, we'll go ahead with roll call, please.
All right, Mayor Muren.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Trembley.
Here.
Mr. Imbody.
Here.
And Mr. Klinger.
Here.
Very good. Sorry, I think the sound is messed up, but I don't know what it is today. Computers are being a challenge. All right, at this time, if anyone planning to speak for or against an item, can please stand up and raise your right hand to be sworn in.
Okay, uh, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and conform to the, uh, facts and, um, uh, rules of this commission? Please say aye.
Very good, thank you. So we will now move on to approval of prior meeting minutes. We have the October ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Was there any adjustments from what was circulated?
I didn't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Minutes are approved. We have no old items on our agenda, therefore we'll move to new items. Item number one, revised application for site plan review, S P dash zero five dash twenty twenty-five, filed by Elite Contracting LLC to review an eight hundred square foot cold storage addition for a contractor office at five forty-five Sixth Street. CPC staff comments.
Yeah, so this is kind of a, uh, new old item. Um, this is a, an item that we reviewed, um, back in.
Testing one, two.
So it's, it's on the stream, it's just not in here, so.
Speak up. Yep. All right, so, uh, just to remind ourselves, uh, this request is located on the south side of Sixth Street between, um, Sherry Street and Bank Street. Uh, the parcel's own C one local commercial along C, uh, Sixth Street. It's a pocket of, uh, C one local commercial. Uh, to the south, it's a neighborhood of R three small lot residential, and it's not located within a hundred year floodplain. Uh, so just to remind ourselves the history of the site, um, previously was a car wash that was being converted into a contractor shop. We reviewed the item, uh, back in June, uh, at our CPC meeting with, um, and it was approved with the condition of receiving a variance on the setbacks. Um, they completed that step at the B Z A meeting at the, uh, on that same day. Uh, so we're back here today because the applicant has, uh, resubmitted an updated site plan for the additions to the structure. Uh, instead of a single addition to the rear, um, they've kind of broken it into a new addition, um, in the front and behind the existing structure. Uh, the front would be a twenty-six foot by twenty-three foot, five hundred and ninety-eight square foot addition. The rear would now measure fourteen by, uh, thirty-six feet or, um, five hundred and four square feet. Uh, both would feature garage doors measuring twelve foot six inch by, uh, fourteen foot three inch. Um, there would be, uh, a service door, uh, to enter the rear addition. Uh, the applicant indicated that they would, uh, that this would be for, um, this addition would be for his work vehicle. And the current setup of the space did not have enough, uh, room for him to park the vehicle on site. Um, I guess one additional item that was discussed in the June meeting, um, was the vinyl fence around the, the back of the site. Um, an update to the site plan now shows that there's a fence with a gate enclosure, um, enclosing the rear of the site. Um, contractor shops commonly have materials and supplies stored on site, and, uh, many utilize outdoor storage. Uh, staff did not discuss, uh, the outdoor storage component previously, so I, staff thought it would be beneficial to discuss this to better understand if it's necessary. Um, if it, if we want to, um, grant a conditional use for outdoor storage, um, it is a conditional use in the C three district. So, uh, our staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the revised application for site plan review, S P dash zero five dash twenty twenty-five, filed by Elite Contracting LLC to review, um, two five hundred square foot cold storage additions for a contractor, uh, office at five forty-five Sixth Street.
Engineering.
Uh, no real concerns. Access is pretty much the same. There is no proposed water sewer since their cold storage, and the previous area is not changing on that, so really no concerns.
Fire prevention.
Uh, really nothing different from June, just to make sure they get all the permits needed for construction.
So the recommendation from staff to the commission is staff recommends approval of revised application for site plan review, S P dash zero five dash twenty twenty-five, filed by Elite Contracting LLC to review two five hundred square foot cold storage additions for a contractor office at five forty-five Sixth Street. Discussion. Hello, good to see you again.
Um, I guess, uh, the only thing I added in regards to the comments is the fence, uh, is wood, not vinyl. So, and, uh, outdoor storage is not necessarily proposed, but it could be a potential. So if that could be approved as a conditional use within the fence area, that would be much appreciated.
Are, are you intending to bring the fence on around to the side in the front?
Yes, it's in the building that's more than the building over to the other building to the west.
Okay, so you would have a gate or something that would you enter in every time? Uh, what have you done in the existing building to, for improvements? Is it all cold storage? Is there an office in there, or what's been done to that? Oh, okay. Um, now, it looks to me like the addition is, uh, on the north side is going to, uh, block the man door entrance into that building and also the, the electric, uh, service that comes in, so that would need to be relocated then, I assume. Oh, is it? Okay, I, just looking at it this morning, I, I, I thought maybe it was coming down further. The problem I have with this is I don't, we don't have any, uh, exterior elevations of the project. And I see it as being pretty awkward with, uh, two different sized additions at a sixteen foot eve height roughly, uh, budding up to a ten foot eve height, and I think it's gonna feel very awkward out there. And C one does have requirements for architectural, um, design. And I don't, I, without seeing some elevations, I don't have a good handle on how you're handling that. I don't know what the ma- exterior materials are, uh, what the roof slopes are, what the, you know, how you access it and all.
Uh, so. Real quick, Jacob is going to go grab the elevations.
Oh. Oh.
So. To fill for time.
Yeah, from my, from my perspective, I think that this is an improvement. I would like to see the overall, you know, street view of the property though. I think the improvements make sense for this area. Um, I like the fencing being added. Just to, to kind of protect the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood. Um, but overall, I don't have concerns with the improvements that are being made. I think that, uh, it's nice to see continued investment in the property. Um, but I agree to try to make sure that it, you know, looks nice from the roadway and not just a tin box on, on the side of the road or aluminum probably.
If you were gonna do outdoor storage, what would you be storing there? Like, what's your proposal?
Trailer, uh, and there's a work trailer that goes with the job site every day.
Okay, so just a trailer, not, not materials, supplies, pallets, that kind of stuff?
Uh, he could put some boards down, yeah, I mean, that, if he has extra wood for a job, that's, that type of stuff. But not a bunch of it, and it should be blocked all with the fence that you wouldn't see it.
How tall is the fence?
Uh, no, eight, eight foot.
Eight foot, I think, yeah.
Eight foot, okay.
From a staff perspective, we're, we're pleased with the fence because contractor shop inevitably stores something outside.
Sure.
You know, you got a project next week and a load of two by fours come in, and so we kind of thought without a fence and without some built-in storage that it would inevitably become a problem. So I think this is getting ahead of it, and it works best for the city and works best for the applicant, that he can put a pallet of two by fours back there, and it's hidden from view.
There's a couple shop trucks too, so those park there at night.
I, I assume you're going to do something with the fence from a preservative standpoint, either paint it or, or preserve it?
It is treated lumber.
Is it? Okay.
Matt, I know we're getting the elevations. Um, can you just talk us through those real quick?
Sure. I think, so, we have the original building here, and the site plan we reviewed, uh, several months ago was an addition at the rear. Um, and now we have an addition at the front of the building. Probably the, the interesting architectural parts are that the additions are taller than the existing building. Am I stating that correctly? But both are taller than the existing building.
Well, they're, would they need an additional variance then for the, uh, new building to the north, or the new extension to the north?
I, I don't believe so.
I think they need to setback.
Yeah.
It is.
Originally, we were not before we submitted, and we decided, you know what?
Just move them within, okay.
We just shortened it up from twenty-five to twenty-three, I believe.
Can you, um, so the, the building at the front, what are like the color and finishes?
I don't know what color he's decided on.
Okay.
I believe it's to match the white.
Is it, um, is it like a? Steel exterior?
Pole buildings.
Pole building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any landscaping requirements for this project?
Salt blacktop around that.
Yeah, I don't know if we could put any trees between the parking lot and the sidewalk.
Yeah, and we could definitely make that, uh.
Well, I just, if there isn't a requirement for it, I don't want to make it more difficult, but I think that that would be a huge improvement along there, to have a couple of trees.
That, that would be acceptable.
Probably just two. It's not a very large area.
No, it's not. I mow it.
Okay, so Wes, so this is... I'm just thinking of, so when you're driving past, you're really looking at the sides of the buildings. So this would be the, so it's the north, really the north elevation.
Just looking at this initially, um. So I like that it has, um, we want to make sure that it looks like it has, do you have a copy in front of you?
I have a spare.
Oh, you got a spare?
Um, so I like that, that we have a kind of a change in color or material. Um, kind of that three foot knee wall type, type feel. Um, I defer to Dan, the architect. Dan, what would your thoughts be about, uh, a window or two on the north elevation?
Uh, I think anything, something would help. Number one, just looking at this initially here, if, if the roof slope would be maybe the same as the, the, uh, existing car wash, uh, as far as the angled slope, that would help it to settle down a little bit. It wouldn't be such a, such a high peak out there.
Well, he was gonna put one in.
Um, it's, um, it's still awkward, to say the least, with the, with that high of a, an eve height versus, uh, what's, what's there now. Currently, the, the existing building, you've done a nice job with painting that and fixing that up. Um, let me, let me throw this out. Does it make sense to do these additions versus maybe just building a facility that would handle all of your needs versus kind of doing this kind of piecemeal? I mean, that, I don't know if you've thought about that or what.
I wouldn't see it as, as piecemeal. I would look at it more as cost effective. To do the additions versus demolition and rebuilding and renovating a building. Yeah, I don't disagree with you in the fact that, yeah, the, the different elevations are different, you know, with the, the heights and so forth in the building. Uh, but with what's proposed, I don't see that as being tremendously awkward necessarily.
Are the existing garage doors, the bays, are the fences stay? Uh, the ones in the old car wash?
On the front, it would, would be the two to the to the right inside of that picture.
Okay.
The two doors there would stay.
These two, correct?
Yeah, okay.
The other ones would be open from the...
What about on the south side of the building?
I'm sorry, did you say the other ones would be open, or they'd be blocked in?
The two garage doors.
On the left.
East there would be part of the building.
Vivien's side.
New building, so they'd be taken off.
Oh, I got you, okay, okay.
And similar on the south side of the building?
Yes.
Have you taken any of the interior walls out or anything where you can go from one space to the other and all?
All taken out.
And what, what, what is the color of the, the siding and the material and the color of the siding?
I'm not positive on that.
Okay.
I, I'd hate to say for sure, since I don't know what he had picked.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. I apologize since we just had received this. So the front addition is gonna go here and block this.
Yes.
This door is the door that we see on the elevation currently.
Yep.
And then these bays are going to stay, or those being, are being enclosed?
They'll stay.
Okay, so I think it is a little bit of a, an awkward, but I think that, you know, it is an improvement to the property, and I think it would be difficult to get, um, additional development in this space, and, and I understand it being cost prohibitive. So I think what would, I would like to see is if we could either add a window or maybe the signage for the building on there as a little, like, on the new addition. I think that that would just be a nice feature, so you don't just have a big blank wall.
I know it's not shown on here, but I think he was planning on in the office area having a window.
Okay.
So there is an office area?
Yeah, there's an office area in.
Which, which is in the existing building?
Front section, no.
No, the, the front addition is gonna be the office space.
You have an office in there?
Yep.
Just for his.
Yeah, so I think that that just will help break it up. Um, and then I would just encourage to have, obviously the, the paint job looks nice for the existing building, but I think making sure that it's consistent across the two buildings to avoid having it broken up.
Right.
A lot is preferred.
I, I do have a question on your elevation too. You're showing, wa- walk me through what you're doing with the, the roof here, cause it, you, you see the peaked roof for the existing building, but then there's a line over it. Are you boxing that in and you'd be turning into a flat roof?
No.
What is that? What's that line then? Right on top of the peaked roof for the existing building?
Is it a reference point?
What line? I don't know what it is, there's no dimensions. It's just a line there. Do you get what I'm asking?
Mm-hmm.
If I was with you, I'd have to ask the architect, who's not here on purpose.
Yeah, yeah, and another thing is you got two different roof pitches for the, the additions too.
Mm-hmm. Difference in size?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm not an architect, but now studying this a little more, the, the proposed here, you have pitched roofs, and then, oh, it's just the dimension, this is actually pitched this way, that's why I don't see it. Never mind, I retract my question. I get it.
So I think, um, looking at the scope of, of our responsibility here, I think adding a window or putting stuff on the side, um, is appropriate. I think overall, if I was building this new, this is not how I would build this, but I understand you're trying to be, meet the needs of the tenant and be, uh, cost conscious to, to rework this building. Um, I think if we can add trees at the front, so I guess I should make these conditions, so uh, trees along the roadway based off of our, um, the shade tree kind of has standards, so probably only two trees, I would guess, based off of the distance, you would want to space them. Um, and then some sort of facade improvement on the, um, north addition, and then work with staff through the overall design. Um, and I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm okay with this, cause I do think overall it's an, an improvement to the property. Um, and it meets all of the kind of zoning restrictions for the parcel, all the drainage restrictions for the area. I think it provides better, um, screening for the properties, uh, around. So, it's not my, my top choice, but I think it's a, a good alternative for the, the restrictions of the property. So I will make it as a motion to approve the site plan with those conditions.
Not to reiterate everything the mayor said, I agree with that, and again, I, I ran a business on Sixth Street for quite a few years, and I appreciate the reinvestment here, so.
Thank you.
Um, this, this is an improvement to the community, so I'll second her motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Is, is this a conditional approval?
Would be for the.
For C one?
It would be for the.
Contractors?
The outdoor storage, not for the.
Not, not for the contractor's office?
No, that's a permitted use in C one.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
And I will, I guess.
Contractor shop listed.
Had you looked at running the, the, the roof lines in parallel, in other words, running the new additions in the same direction that the existing building is? I, I think the, architecturally, I, I, it just, I'm struggling with it.
How you, how would you meet it up, coming up here? Yeah.
I think you, you would, you would save a little on your peak height and, um, you know, and it would, it would seem to sit maybe better with the existing building. It's just, yeah, it's, it's awkward.
Was there anyone else here that wanted to speak for or against this item? Again, I just want to make sure I'm not missing people hiding back there. Okay, very good.
I, I think in the C one district, I, I guess we ought to have or ought to be a little bit more particular in what we're allowing to develop in regards to our architectural standards for, uh, for this. Um, so I, I don't think I can support this from that standpoint.
Other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oh, sorry.
Roll call.
We'll just move, just.
Alrighty, um, Mayor Muren.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Trembley.
Aye.
Mr. Imbody.
Aye.
And Mr. Klinger.
Nay.
And if, we, we appreciate it. If you can please just work with, with staff and try to make it as aesthetically appealing as possible, we would really appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, thank you.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, should we vote on the conditional use for outdoor storage?
I apologize, I didn't make that a part of my motion. Um, so I will also motion to approve a conditional use for outdoor storage consistent with the screening, uh, requirements.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the outdoor storage? Hearing none, Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Trembley.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Imbody.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Nay.
And Mayor Muren.
Aye.
Real quick, I just have a, a couple notes. So, if, if when you submit kind of some revisions to, to staff, could you just include kind of what the proposed colors are and stuff? It doesn't necessarily have to be a full color rendering, but just give us some idea, and then, um, one idea, it's not on top of the screen, but I was wondering, um, if, put some thought into about at the north side, if there's an opportunity to put some foundation plannings. I know it's concrete. Opened up like a three foot area, you could put like, uh, some foundation plannings there, that would help soften it also. I'm just asking to look into the idea. I'm not saying it is a one hundred percent must, but and then, as usual, just submit the revisions to us and we'll work through it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to item number two. Application for zoning amendment Z A dash eleven dash twenty twenty-five submitted by Rossi, I always forget how you say it, Rossi Enterprises LLC to rezone three hundred West Front Street from R three small lot residential to C three downtown commercial. CPC staff comments.
All right, so, uh.
Hey Troy, can you close that door?
Okay, oh, thanks.
It sounded like Troy was about.
The, uh, faithful restart to fix everything, so he doesn't need thirty seconds to do that.
Okay.
Unplug it and start over.
I was like, what did I do? Sorry, you built this system. Testing. Well, I was loud before anyway, so.
Sounds much better.
Alrighty. Jacob, whenever you're ready.
So, uh, the request is located on the north side of West Front Street at the intersection with Southwest Street. Parcel's zone R three small lot. Parcel's zoned R three small lot residential. To the north and west is a neighborhood of R three small lot residential. To the south and east, it is zoned C three downtown commercial. Uh parcel is not uh located within uh the hundred year floodplain. And the City of Findlay land use plan designates the parcel as single family small lot. Uh parcel history, uh the building originally was a funeral home, but it's housed several office uses up until around two thousand and eight. Uh since two thousand and eight, it's primarily operated as a du- as a triplex. Um, staff analysis, uh when staff review zoning requests, uh it's important to consider the land use plan. Uh City of Findlay land use plan designates the site as small lot residential. Uh the request therefore goes against the land use pla- plan adopted by the City of Findlay. Although the Findlay land use plan is only one of the guiding criteria, deviation from the plan is generally done under unique circumstances. Uh in the case of the request, there are a variety of concerns that suggest deviation would not be beneficial to the surrounding neighborhood. Uh these concerns include uh increased traffic, increased intensity of use, uh extending commercial westward into the uh residential neighborhood. Uh if this parcel is rezoned, uh the CPC must consider a full range of uses that would be permitted onsite. Um, this would include a range of commercial uses that may or may not be uh appropriate directly abutting uh residential uses. So our staff recommendation was, uh staff recommends denial of the application for zoning amendment Z A dash eleven dash twenty twenty five submitted by uh Rossi Enterprises LLC to rezone three hundred West Front Street to from R three small lot residential to C three downtown commercial.
Engineering?
No comment.
Fire prevention?
No comment.
So the re- recommendation from CPC staff to the commission is staff recommends denial of application for zoning amendment Z A dash eleven dash twenty twenty five. Submitted by Rossi Enterprises LLC to rezone three hundred West Front Street from R three small lot residential to C three downtown commercial. Can you tell us a little bit about your project? And I appreciate you bringing the materials, that's always very helpful.
With them uh for this lot, this is the first of several contingencies in order to execute that first agreement. Uh our intent to receive from the concept of that uh wish to start a micro distillery. Uh which would be a talented back portion of building or in the front room, a tasting room slash cocktail, cocktail lounge. Think a uh a nighttime uh night bar. So it'd be a low volume um production as well as for sure to be uh more of this more of a luxury side, higher end drinks, so it's gonna be built and lived both throughput. Intention would be to be open on Fridays and Saturdays. As well as uh potentially being open uh for special events, maybe as it's located right across the street from Performing Arts Center. Maybe open evenings of uh certain productions.
Um, I want to point out, if you go north. Behind the the little addition there, that's actually paved. It's kind of covered with grass a little bit, but it's actually a parking lot back there. I don't know how many spots it is, um but that would be the primary parking that would be behind the building, so it wouldn't be like, activity would not be on the street. It'd be kinda like secluded back in there.
So.
Yeah, I'm also sorry, I'm playing Sammy Brown, their real estate agent. Um. The intended use, I guess, previously was maybe a triplex. Since two thousand and eight, it's our understanding that the property has been vacant. It is severely deteriorated. Including lots of water infiltration into the building, so their goal is to revitalize it and bring it back to more of that historic feel. To match their their aesthetic, so.
I should mention that I had the Boyd County Building Inspector come out to just to get the electricity turned back on, and he was like, absolutely not. So it's been, there there has not been water or electricity to the building for at least three years, even longer, according to like a neighbor and a couple of people I talked to, so. It's kinda just been set empty. Um, the the boiler hasn't run for a time or two, and there is no kitchen in there. So if anyone, there's kind of a issue. Yeah, there there's a, there's like a busy part of bathrooms, but not some residential bathrooms, and on the rooftop, there is a kitchenette, but it's. Yeah, yeah.
All the doors have been broken in, like the neighbors and neighbors, like some water, stuff like that, so.
Yeah, well, so I don't normally disagree with Matt, cause he's a pretty smart guy, but personally, I love this project. Um, I I think this is a beautiful property that has, you know, clearly been neglected and um I think that the small batch kind of concept would fit well with this property. Um, obviously, whenever we're looking at uh zoning amendments or our building is how, what is the impact to the neighborhood? How do we make sure it's consistent? And so I understand the concern of extending kind of commercial operations into a neighborhood, but I think, you know, an important aspect is that you're catty corner from the Performing Arts Center, which is much more impactful to the neighborhood than a tasting room would be. Um, so I think that the improvements to the property, having that off-street parking. Um, about how many folks do you, what what do you expect the capacity to be? So maybe like fifty max for the rooms? Okay, um. Yeah, so I think, you know, my biggest uh concern and what I asked kinda Eric to be prepared to talk about, did you do your homework, Eric? Is just kind of reiterating, one of the concerns is when we rezone a property, then that opens it up to future uses that may not be as consistent. So Eric, can you just walk us through, moving to the C three? What are kind of the the key things that that would open the property up to?
So looking at the uh list of permitted uses, I mean, the distillery, I think it has to come back to City Planning Commission, cause it's not mentioned, and it would be a conditional use. Um, possibilities for C three in the co- uh that are listed. Like libraries, restaurants, art antique shops, bakeries, uh craft supplies, uh bars, taverns, and nightclubs are listed there. Which is just a little concerning for me. Um, daycares, dry cleaners, flower shops, like smaller entities, mostly for this downtown area. And then for the uh conditional uses, I know they had mentioned in discussions with me, they were talking about possibly mixed use, having an apartment above. I don't know if that's still an option, but that would come back to City Planning Commission for that conditional use for uh mixed use. Um, automo- automotive sales is a conditional use downtown and uh charging stations as well. So there's only three listed and then.
What were those last two?
Charging station for vehicles and automo- automotive sales.
So uh just bars, nightclubs, taverns, which that's what I would put this in the category of, is a conditional use and would require approval from.
It's a, it's a conditional use or it's a permitted use?
Conditional use.
No, I don't, I mean. Unless I got an auto to.
Um, the the most up-to-date code is always American Legal Publishing. It costs thousands of dollars to submit, to get paper copies.
Okay.
So, American Legal Publishing, uh bars, nightclubs, and taverns are a conditional use. So uh there is protection there. So yeah, I mean.
Okay, so so let me just make sure I understand the process. So right now, first step is if if we decide to move forward, move it to the C three. That then allows them to apply for the conditional use for the distillery operations underneath taverns, breweries, et cetera.
Yep.
Even online, it says bars are.
I would, I would, I would consider distilling and, cause you're creating something.
It's fair.
I think that it would fall under conditional use.
Sorry, I was looking under the wrong C. We're both right.
Alright. No, I'm no disagreement there, Eric. It was more of what else could go here if this was approved, right? That, that's, I think that what I'm looking at is what, what is the breadth of what could be put here in the future?
Hopefully, yeah. Our our hope is it's a successful business for generations to come, right? But the what-if scenario, we have to protect what, if this is not a success in ten or twenty years, what could come in and behind you based on the zoning change. That's our, that we're trying to protect the neighborhood, so.
Are are you planning any improvements on the upper level? And in to what?
It's gonna be several stages.
Um, I I like the the concept of what you've done, but again, I have problem with the the zoning change too. Did the inspector say anything to you about uh handicapped accessibility when he was out to look at the building? Uh he missed, he missed his his mark then.
Well, he was their primary discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think that they already have that in their minds that they will add accessibility?
Well.
Add accessibility to the back to to get pallets and things in.
Okay. Okay, but uh with the plan that you've got there with the restrooms and stuff, it just totally doesn't work for handicapped accessibility, so. There's a lot of things that would need to probably come into play there for that, for that use.
So through this conversation, my thought is it makes sense for this to be a a use, a conditional use in the down- commercial, C three downtown commercial. Some of the other things you listed do not, in my opinion, make as much sense to be permitted uses. That's not a them problem, that's a code problem. So I would almost rather say, hey, listen, we just said, I don't really love auto parts stores are a permitted use. That seems like that should be a conditional use. That is something else we should address. Verse, if we want the downtown to be a driver area that is drawing people in and creating, you know, folks wanna live in that neighborhood, cause then they can walk to the a show and to the distillery. I think that that is, this is more consistent with what we wanna see verse, well, now we're concerned about all of these other things. Well, if that's a concern, then we should address that in the code. Would that make sense, guys?
I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, looking exclusively at what we're here to talk about today, making this a downtown C three property. I can see as written, some of those uses would be less than desirable. But on this parcel in particular, especially with the mindset, and I really appreciate this thoughtfulness and what you are proposing to do with the area. It's adjacent to the Marathon Center Performing Arts. There is some residential in the abutting, you're right there on that cusp. And when I look at the alternatives for this parcel, um it really doesn't make a lot of sense to invest a lot of money keeping this as an R three. And for the long term in the city, I can see extending the C three to this would probably be a good use of trying to invest in our downtown. But that does come with the caveat that you brought up, maybe we should be a little more picky in the C three district. What is conditional, that way we can kind of guide those developments, so they don't look out of place.
Okay, just so we're all on the same page, when we're looking at the C three districts, when Matt was talking through auto repairs and stuff, that is not permitted uses. Those are not even conditional uses in the C three. He was talking.
Auto sales.
Auto sales.
Auto sales.
I will read the list, just just so we're on the same page. Professional services, libraries, restaurants, art and antique shops, bakeries, bed and breakfast.
All that stuff.
Bookstore, bars, taverns, nightclubs, coffee shops, convenience stores, craft supplies, dance studios, daycares, dry cleaners, flower shops, food retailing, hardware store, health services, ice cream shop, beauty shop, barber shop, veterinary clinic, taxi services, motel and hotel, cinema theaters, commercial schools, clubs, financial institutions, parking lots, entertainment uses, government uses, public and quasi uses. Conditional uses in the C three district. Residential uses, automotive sales, electric vehicle charging. Other uses, other uses are those which the City Planning Commission finds to be uh similar character, but not essentially listed. And so, um Eric was um Eric was on a line of thought that might be accommodating for both in that uh bars, taverns, and nightclubs might not be exactly what this is. It's a this, like a boutique distillery.
Right.
Therefore, it's an item not listed, and then it's a conditional use.
Yep, and again, I wanna steer away the conversation from what do we think this use should be? This is a rezoning request to say, could anything go on this property? And I'm looking at the uses, the permitted uses, and I don't really see anything for this property that I would be really against on permitted uses. Conditional, yes. Should a small batch distillery go in, I don't know, we can have that conversation if you guys get to it. But, I mean, a coffee shop, a a dance studio, food retailing, I mean, this is, these are not especially, these are not late-night impactful activities. A a bar maybe, a bar would be more impactful to the neighbors. That that one would be the only one that I would really have some heartache about telling a neighbor, hey, you're gonna have a bar next door. So that, I mean, other than that one, most of the stuff, I think, makes sense in this area. I could get behind it. To me, the discussion is, does a bar, tavern, a nightclub business, do we want that on that corner? Cause that's the most impactful permitted use, in my opinion.
Okay, so what I am hearing is we have some concerns with potential future uses. But in this instance, we do feel that the C three is appropriate. Looks like we may, and we believe that this is, they will need to come back for the conditional use for distillery, and if they choose to do mixed use. Then that you also need a permit for that. Okay, so with that, cause we could sit here and ask you questions all day long about your plans.
Are there any screening requirements in between residential and C three? Like what would that look like? So if a C three were to come in and this property, what would be the requirement for screening in between this and the neighboring properties? Regardless of the specific use.
Um, I'd have to look.
Okay.
That's, generally, we're we're looking at C two to residential.
Right.
I one to residential, I'd have to look. Um, I mean, but, I mean, the practicality is, there's really, I mean, it's, it's.
Probably not a whole lot of room for a bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go, there you go, okay, three feet. Some oak tr- oak trees. Yeah, residential uses, yep.
Yep, yep, and tho- those residences still get the same level of protections from them. But I do think that the building itself creates a buffer from if you have the parking or if you decide to put a little outdoor patio on the the side there, then you're kind of creating a a natural buffer.
Um, just, could you speak to your experience of running these type facilities? And do you have an estimated budget for the remodeling and everything? Okay, great, um, perfect.
So would it be appropriate for the motion to include the ru- well, I guess, okay, rezoning's always throw me off, we can't include conditions.
Our life would be easier if we could.
That would be so much easier. Yes, okay. So they will need to come back separately for conditional use, assuming the rezone goes through.
Correct.
Okay. Would it make more sense for us to a- also approve a conditional use?
So so the next step for this is that it has to go through City Council for.
So we can't give a conditional use until?
Well, and I don't think, I mean, I personally would like to, uh, I'd like them to come back with kind of the full plan with the conditional use. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna have this, not necessarily, but, you know, I'd like them to have a pretty good idea of what they wanna do for the conditional use. I mean, I I can say, from what they described, we would be supportive of it, you know. know? Um, but I think, I think we would, I, I'd want a little more detail on exactly, are they going to repave the parking lot? Are they going to use the existing parking lot? Those kinds of, uh, maybe hours of operation and, and just everything honed in a little bit more.
Nope, that's fine. Alright, very good. With that, I will motion...
Should we, should we consider tabling this?
I don't see anybody.
It, were there no communications or anything from neighbors? Obviously, none of them were here.
So I had one with a neighbor, two, that owns the three buildings, uh, duplexes to the west, and he had no issue with it. But they're all rentals. Whether his tenants had issues with it, I don't know.
They get sent, the, the tenants get sent a letter. And, and I can vouch for, um, this was a, an issue with the downtown design review for maintenance issues. Um, and I was out to the property several times. Neighbors came up to me. I mean, the property, it's a real, it's a cool building. It is, I can, it's in very bad shape. Um, so I do think the neighbors would appreciate reinvestment. So, you know.
Very good. I will motion to recommend approval to council for zoning amendment ZA dash 11 dash 2025 submitted by Rossi Enterprises LLC to rezone 300 West Front Street from R3 Small Lot Residential to C3 Downtown Commercial.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Alright, um, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Tremble?
Aye.
Mr. Embady?
Aye.
Mr. Klinger?
Uh, aye.
And Mayor Mearon?
Aye.
Very good.
Okay, so, this goes to the Planning and Zoning Committee at noon. You'll see Jacob and I here again. Um, and then, uh, and then after that, it will go to city council for three readings. Okay, it, it can work, it can still work under this year.
No, I don't think so. I don't think it will carry over. Um, so, Law Director Feigner, because we have a transition in council, will it have to wait until the first meeting in January to begin its readings with council?
We are three, but could it make, it stays or no? That, that would be tough. And I had thought that if there's anything pending, it's dead by the end of the year.
It, it dies at the end of the year.
Okay, yeah, the, the deadline to submit was yesterday.
So Denise may still be able to get it on, but will you be able to do notices?
Yeah. So, the most likely scenario is, uh, you will, you will have the feedback from Planning Commission, which was a yes. Planning and Zoning Committee, a yes or a no. Um, and then it'll go to city council. Because we have new city council members coming on, uh, it'll probably start its readings at the first of the year, unfortunately. Is that, is that an issue for you guys?
Well, we'll, we'll check, because really, the public notice goes out as part of the third reading, so then we should be, because that's when we do the public hearing, correct? Is right before the third reading or second reading? Either way.
Before the third.
So we technically could probably get the notices out in time. So we, we will try to confirm and have that information for the noon meeting.
So, let me just, so, Law Director and Mayor, if we get the three readings in, and the 30-day waiting period extends, that's not an issue.
I don't think that's an issue.
It's just getting the three readings in before the end of the year.
Correct.
Okay. Um, we will do our best. After this meeting, we'll go talk with, um, Denise, get her some cookies, and see if she can help us. And we should have, uh, you, we'll give you an update right before the noon meeting. Yes, please. Yep.
Very good.
We'll be here, and then five new people here.
Alright. Seeing no other items on our agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.